I'm going to call our regular Board of Education meeting to order. And this evening, we are lucky enough to have some gentlemen from the JV football team. And Coach Slater is going to lead us in the pledge. So if they could all please come up front here. Turn around so everybody can see you in the TV cameras. Gentlemen, I'm going to introduce you when I do. If you'll just raise your hand so everybody knows who you are. We have Coach John Slater, Hunter Keller, Dylan McCarell, Gavin Rusk, Reese Renaud, Ben Hitzelberger, Kevin McKernan, and Hudson Davenport. And I want to thank them because they are outside doing powder puff and they are in here real quick and they got to get back to the game. So if we could all please rise, gentlemen, turn around. Whenever you're ready, we're ready.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Good luck the rest of the games.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Next, we have our mission statement.
Everything through schools we provide a quality education that empowers students to be successful in a global community. Kyle?
Here.
Sarah?
Margaret?
Here.
Chris?
Here.
Jessica?
Here.
Sue?
Here.
Thank you. Moving on, I'll need a motion to approve the agenda, but I would like to add a number 13, a closed session to consider materials exempt from discussion or disclosure by state or federal statute pursuant to section 8H of the Michigan Open Meetings Act.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Regular agenda.
Regular agenda.
So that makes adjournment 14.
Correct. And that makes adjournment 14, yes. Did someone support that?
Oh, support.
Okay. It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next, motion to approve the consent agenda.
I motion to accept the consent agenda as presented.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Brian?
The only thing, and I don't have the last name on it, Tim, what's Connie's last name?
Davis.
Davis on your back. The interim Employee Benefits Coordinator resigned, and so we have another interim, which is Connie Davis. And the new person, Angela Blake, starts October 22nd. So there'll be an overlap between the two as we do the transition, so.
And we approved her last time.
Yes, we approved Aunt Louis. Oh, Angela.
Angela, you did, right?
Yes, we already approved Angela, yes.
Okay, thank you.
And I had no questions on the claims and accounts.
All right, it has been moved and supported. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to our presentations, our first one is the odd.
I'd like to introduce Todd Ossman. Ossman, excuse me. He is from Dominion Church. As the Board has been talking about what to do with the odd, and we've talked about, right now you have three options. One is looking into use of the facility rented and so forth. Dominion Church has put together a proposal for the Board. I did put on your, in front of you, an email I did receive, just some more information. It's from Dominion Church. The second option would be you could sell the property. And the third option is to do nothing and take it as part of the district properties. So this time I'll turn it over to Todd to explain. You do have these proposals that they put together for you.
Good evening. My name is Todd Ossman. This is Paul LaVoite, excuse me. Been in contact with Brian and the subject of the odd, they come up, of it being an opportunity to perhaps lease or rent. We are currently, I would say, I guess renting the facility right now for the odd forium over in the high school. Well, we're using it on Sunday mornings, but looking at the future events that you folks have planned for the school. They can kind of coincide with what we have going on. We're just trying to keep something consistent as well. And it's expanding to the area a little bit more with more events, which I believe the odd will allow us to do. Had they put together a proposal for you based on lease agreements that we had drafted up by a lawyer, basically as a, just a general terms and agreements of a normal lease with some provisions in there that we would take care of the facilities, we would take care of the maintenance of it in the event of a lease situation, right? I'm not sure what changed in that. But Paul, the reason why I have him up here is he's a master fitter over at General Motors, where I also work as well. And he also heads up a mass facility of people that do all the maintenance on the property. So we have any kind of maintenance that would be required on the property as far as the repairs at our disposal to use with them. A lot of them doing it for pro bono work, some of them doing it for small pay and so forth. So we're very confident that no matter what needs to be done on the property to keep it in camp or on that, we would be able to service that. I've also sent an email over this morning, sorry, this afternoon, to Brian, who I think Mr. Wonsley who forwarded that off to you, anticipating some of the questions that he said that might come up this weekend. And so what I tried to do is capture that in the regarding anticipated questions section. I don't know if you've had a chance to review those, but we just started the church back in April. And since then, we've had a consistent income of about $2,400 a month, which doesn't seem like a lot. It's a small church and we're just starting out. And our biggest expense that we have right now is just the rent. Nobody is paid. Everything is volunteer staff. And as we grow, obviously there'll be more income that comes in there. Again, we're only meeting one Sunday a month a week, and that's basically for two hours. And that's basically our expenses. So anything on top of that, we go into the repairs, the facility, equipment, things like that nature. We do have plans to grow. Obviously, we don't want to just stay at, you know, the 20 or so members that we have right now. We want to definitely get going and do more work in the community. We had a President's Ethic at all days and, you know, did a lot of outreach and added functionality and got some interest in it. But again, what we found is, is that people are coming by, they don't really know how to find us in the facility that we're at right now. It seems to be a large, and even though we put a flag and whatnot in a little bit side of the presentation, maybe a little funny material, but I don't know how to drive to people in where we're at right now, which is thinking of signing up on one today, you know, on 10:30 in the morning. So if there's any questions that you got from me, maybe I can field some those for you or...
In this email that, we're just reading it right now.
Sure.
And so you've been using our building since April?
Yes, often since April. And I mean by that is there was a, I believe it was a play that you guys had scheduled in late April. And so we were kind of balancing in and balancing out to try to accommodate the schedule that was there. And then from after that point, so forth, on the, every Sunday. Except except for one Sunday, on a Monday basis, I don't know, we're not there.
And then in this, in the email, talks of additional services on Wednesday evenings to generate business or whatever you're looking for. So concerts, dinners, so you would be using the odd, that space for this stuff as well?
Yeah, so the understanding that I was having in the conversation with Mr. Wonsley was that we would be actually leased the facility rather than just running on a, you know, a one-to-two, two-to-basis or on a Sunday morning. So the Wednesday night, I think they would turn the, we're generating income from a church because it seems so backwards, everything's, you know, volunteer basis and donations. But we do take up an offering that most of you have ever known, church wouldn't understand. We do that on Sundays, and we could also have classes that we do that, so that's what that statement means. But we also...
All right. So maybe I should have said generate business, but you're looking to use the building for more things, not just, not just your church service based on this stuff, so...
Yes, we want to do a lot more community outreach. We want to do, maybe a little bit more on that. There's what called the upward basketball, which I'm not sure if you're familiar with that. It's basically training little kids on the values of sportsmanship and just giving their best and in basketball form. So we'd like to use the gym there to be able to do that on Saturdays. That would be pretty much probably a six-hour event every Saturday, as long as we can run it. That generates income as well for the teams, athletes, and the coaches that are there. There's also a cheer aspect to that, where you take the younger girls that don't play basketball into that same kind of arena. We also have a, we really want to do a lot of stuff with some grants as well, giving back to the community when it comes to just the average teenagers. We've got a few charts for the teenagers. I've got five boys, my oldest is 21, going down to seven, so I really have an aspect for looking at the children's lives and trying to better their lives with sports and things like that, and get them involved in some positive things. So yeah, we want to do that on the weekends, during the week if possible, and use the facilities there to do that.
Do you, is this Richmond community people? I mean, is the church Richmond?
Yes. Primary, we're gathering, right now I live in Castle, which is right on the corner, you know, 31.
I know, we're castles.
Right.
I live there.
Yeah. But I'm right there, so we're in Richmond schools, but we're obviously in Castle. But I'm here from Memphis, right?
Yeah.
And we have, we have some that are coming from New Haven. We have, we have some that are coming from the trailer park and the parking complex. So we're drawing more, but the core group that we have, we've met kind of along the years and have come together. And so again, we're doing some advertising in the area, but like I said, we just have a hard time getting them to see where we're parking at, which is in the back. It just takes a lot of brain.
Brain.
Do you have nonprofits, Hannah?
We are, we're nonprofit as far as a nonprofit corporation set up for state. We're in the process of getting a termination letter, which explains around 60 months to get that paperwork processed with the Center for Health, but we are in the process of doing that. And we've contracted that out. We're not trying to do that on our own. It's important to have paperwork.
So Brian, have you shared with them the inspection of things that were recommended?
Yeah. I've shared with the inspection and the house, where we did a tour of the building a bunch of months ago.
Yeah.
Right around when that, it was a brick.
Do we know, I don't know if I have the discussion, but from the inspection list, how many of those items you were planning to fix or repair, and how many you would kind of not do right away?
So I don't have that information from you right now. I apologize. But again, this word, I'm relying on Paul. I can let you speak there.
I've already got a master electrician kept in. He's a professional for, still gave it to me yesterday. So I'm a big master plumber, firefighter. I'm getting into the air conditioning, I have to come in, particularly the oil, get some oil inspections, copy data. I don't know if that one is real hard. That one is, that one is a good thing. It checked it out. We plan, our goal is to assume complete and whole responsibility, which means repairing the roof, the drainage system from the roof, issues with the basement. Everything that was on the inspection list, I have full confidence that we can set through this, because I discussed with Brian and Link, my personal love for this type of building. Because I come from Central Indiana, where the Blue Hooch family was affiliated, that Japanese, and that just sort of historic fact, all this touches home to me as well.
Just want to make sure that if there was something in the report or the inspection that they recommended to be fixed, if you guys thought maybe that's not quite priority for you guys, it wasn't just going to sit, because the longer it sits unfixed, obviously the property would decrease in value over time if you guys, if you're done with it, you have to resell it. Just trying to think about if things are going to go unfixed for how long, but...
To my knowledge, I think the only thing that we've seen on the report version would be, I think, some of the windows that they replaced with the red one that was received. I'm not quite sure. I know we talked about the roof, but after we had a look at the picture, we obviously had the inspection up there. It just looked like it had to be really fixed in certain areas, the drainage off there. We talked with Paul and his team.
And that was, actually, that's very minor thing, because it can proceed to be very expensive when it's not. And as a matter of getting proper drainage with, you know, on top there, there's very little drainage, the drainage to the upper roof, but there's no drainage from the upper roof. You get it off of that side of the roof, and that's where the suspect problems are at. It's just a matter of a few downspouts, but attaching it to the roof and then going to the small roof area. Really quite minor.
So we talked about that. I mean, it was the first thing, after talking with Mr. Wonsley, it seemed, I believe there was a little water, I don't want to say damage, no water visibility that was coming through. And we questioned that right away, and he said, yeah, it was noted on the inspection. So that's why I said, Paul, I need your help, when you run through your guys over there. Is there some stuff I just, okay, I'm a study, I don't know. And so I'm relying on the team of people that I'm discovering, but to try to get it comfortable there. Isn't there something with doors? Two, isn't there?
There's one of the main doors, the handle doesn't work. And we have to place, we have to draw up the call order to make it accessible, maybe accessible from a ramp perspective or an adiacal lines. Again, we wouldn't have to do that until we're doing such renovations that are required. In your packet or in the report packet, I gave you another copy of the report, because we had it, I'd say one of that, that I gave them. You know, from the last time, we had that real heavy rain, never occurred. It's a sub pump, you can see it when we're down, dirt residue from where the, overcapacity of the sub pump. But we have problems all over the city that, in a short amount of time, so.
So what do you guys foresee the longevity being of leasing this building?
So we, our initial, my initial response is at least go get it for one year. And it has been rolling through the, you know, I'm hoping that we have to move out there because we're moving past, because it has my whole, and in reality, it should might be for one, two years, but I really don't know. You know, we're, I did this for a long while with my, my family and my kids, and obviously the people that we have around us. This isn't something that we just thought about, hey, let's start a church, you know, this is just something that I'm going for all of the time. Moving on, this is one thing, this was a request to start. So like I said, it faces your, two years, three years, you know, before.
What is the capacity, Brian?
Oh, I don't know. I don't know.
I didn't say that. Do you guys even know?
I read somewhere, three people said the capacity's to the main auditorium.
Could have been dark, but this is not really involved.
I mean, I just got to tell you, just, this is just me speaking, that looking to lease to something, you know, the last time we did it, I remember, it did not go well. And that was not set well. So it's, it's good to see two people standing here, kind of representing, getting, talking about the whole thing of what you're in for down the road than that. And from my perspective, it's really going to be whether I think that it's going to work. You know, I'm just going to be honest with you, that it didn't go well, and if I've got to decide some things, it's going to be what my gut tells me.
If I can make one statement.
Sure.
I think that the large difference between maybe what was there and what we're doing is that we kind of committed, we want to make this new, that is for, you know, many personal things, but more for, and what we can do to reach out to people. That also means that it's tremendous given that these folks have shoulders since the beginning, and that, okay, and it really has. And I don't take a salary from it at all. I don't touch that way at all. It goes right into what we're doing to just get back. I don't know what this income situation was with the other folks that were there. I don't know if they had a set, if you want to make that what's coming here. What I'm saying is that we would, every single week, have that money coming in on a, a weekly basis. So I'm not taking any, any money from that at times. Instead, my goal is to get this up and running and self-sustaining, and then go get the grants and, you know, fund the rest of the over and stuff. Again, I understand, but you know, one's been the question, I didn't fully understand that, but no, no problems are created before.
That's very good. And again, I'm not speaking for the board, I'm just, I'm just talking myself, my thoughts. I just wanted to share.
Absolutely.
Anybody else? Well, thank you. We appreciate it. How our, how our process goes, this is the meeting where we have a presentation, and then that will give us a couple of weeks to digest. And maybe if there's some of us that want to ask Mr. Wonsley for more information, we may reach out to you. And then when we come back in two weeks, it will be back on the agenda as an action item, if that's the direction that the board's going to go. But Mr. Wonsley will go through that process with you.
Sure. Thank you so much. I appreciate your board's time.
Thank you very much.
I just also want to point out, there was another group that showed interest in seeing the packet, they declined the presentation together as a group. And then you got the other reports that you have seen for student jobs, you may not have seen those as a staff, the inspection report and the building crisis.
Good. Okay. Moving on, our 2017, 18 NWA, MSTA, PSAT, and SAT results. We're going to start with elementary. Mr. Koshen.
Mr. Koshen's getting ready. Put on your packet, there was a revision that he made today. The one that you had in hard copies, the revision came today, with not much change in place.
Yes, yes. Keep your focus.
A little bit.
I'll speak loud enough so you can hear back there.
Thank you.
Okay, well, I'd use a present for our student achievement data for Lee Elementary. At any time, if you have any questions, thoughts, or anything you want to share, just stop in between. Also, the slides will be more happy to explain any further. So looking at our Mstep data, once at the elementary, third and fourth grade students take the Mstep. They take ELA and math. So for this year, excuse me, last year's third grade students, for 2017, 2018, 45% of students were proficient or advanced in relationship to the county. The county average was 44%. In third grade math, 43% of the students at Lee Elementary were proficient or advanced in relationship to the county. That's 45% was the average for the county. Fourth grade, Lee Elementary students, 49% were proficient or advanced, and in comparison to the county, which was average of 46% of the students. And then in math, 40% of students at Lee were proficient or advanced, and the county average was 41%. Next thing that the state data gives us, they give us the student growth ratings. So as you look, they give a 4, 3, 2, and 1. And the average student growth percentage required for the rating, to give a 4, which is the highest, 60 to 100% of students of the average, either growth rating exceeds the average. So if you get a 3, that means that the growth rating was met, and that's 40 to 59% is required for that rating. For the Lee Elementary, since...
So what did we get?
That's my next slide.
Okay.
Yep. I wanted to show you, I want to show you one of that first, and then the anticipation.
It's a pillow.
Yes. Now, the only data we have is for fourth grade students, because in order for the state to calculate student growth, they take third year when they took out the test prior year in third grade, and then they group the students who had the same performance in the prior test, and that's like the multiple percentage. So since third grade students don't take the Mstep in the second grade, that's why there's no student growth data for third grade students. So at elementary, we're looking at fourth grade. And you see the data here is 2016 and 2017, because that's the most recent data that the state has. So I want to say, I go back, so what would my aim for to get that 4, which is the highest score, we're looking at 60 to 100. So for ELA, we had a mean student growth percentage of 61.9, so we got all four points out there. And then for math, we had a 58.1. So looking at that, we missed, again, that 4 by about two points. So close to not quite, so we got the highest rating for ELA, and then we got the second highest for math.
I just want to reiterate, I want to interrupt Dave from that. What he said is, it's kind of, it is a new way, the state is, I don't know if it's a new way, but it's within calculating. If you picture in 15, 16, the kids take the Mstep in third grade. They rank the kids from best to not best. Then they take the kids that, let's say was at the 20th percentile, or the 23rd percentile. See how they did when they took the 16, 17. And of that group, what they're saying is 61.9% of our kids were at the high end of that group. So, and that's a good thing, from the perspective, in terms of that number, but they're comparing kids of the same level to where they did the next year. They have not released the next year's, the 17, 17 growth. Last I heard, they're going to be released in December. So again, the challenge we face is, the state of last May, April, some days of May, we're just getting it in August, and they're just now going to release how we did in December, six months later, so.
So are they the same 20% of kids, or is it just a little?
They're, they're looking at that group and how they did in growing.
So this is the exact same student?
They do. It's this, they group of kids that are, that scored that same range, and how they did the following year. And they do that for all the, all the groups. So if you were at the bottom, the tempers, and they look at that group, and they measure how they, they grew, and they'll rank them that way. It is a convoluted system.
But it isn't necessarily the same kids, because there's been growth in the event of time. Am I right?
They're looking at how those students did the previous year, how much growth they had the next year.
But if they grew, I mean, you understand what I'm saying?
If they grew, which is what we want, it'll be more different. So then the following year, when we took the fourth grade test, it starts all over. How did they do the previous year compared to what we have this year?
Got it.
I would say it's a constant moving target.
It's a moving target, is what it always is, right? It's not true. It's a moving target. I don't know, because it might not be the same students. I could definitely put different groups, but I'm right, that's your, in that same example.
And that, I really didn't do justice in any explanation, but try to explain that to the class, which you just want to teach kids, right? Try to figure this out. Or they have, well, the administrators have to stand up there and try to explain it.
And all the ministry went through professional development in August at ISE, and they're explaining how this was all calculated, and it's kind of nice to say we calculated for you, because there's a lot of, a lot of work, a lot of calculations that go on the basis of your town. The next piece of growth to look at, which is supplied by the Michigan Department of Education, we look at the overall growth. So when we look at the Lee student growth overview, this percentage, 83.97, what that shows is, they take into account students that scored abs or above their growth targets, and students who were not proficient and moved to proficient. Those are the kind of two groups of students that formed into, they'll give this number. 100 is the highest, so at 83.97, I'll show them that a lot of our students during, no, this time, 2016, 2017, the fourth grade students at Lee Elementary, they're either at or above their student growth, or they moved from not proficient. they're either at or above their student growth, or they moved from not proficient to proficient, so that's how we got that eighty-three point nine seven. So kind of just another piece of data to look at. Now, what we look at next is our NWEA data, another piece of information assessment. We do the NWEA three times a year, from the fall, the winter, and the spring. So this can show a little bit more student growth, we show three times a year. So when you look at these percentages, these are percentages from the fall test last year to the spring test. So it shows almost a full year growth, almost a full year. We do the fall test in the second week of September, and then we do the spring test kind of second week of April. So I'm using ideas, it's not a full school year, but pretty close to a full school year. So overall, in the entire district, excuse me, entire school, at eighty-eight percent of the kindergarten to fourth grade students met their student growth goal. So NWEA, when they do their fall test, NWEA does the calculation, looks at the national norms, compares all the students at that grade level, and they set a student growth goal. So these students build a goal after the fall test, the teachers talk about the goal, they encourage students, so they kind of have an aim, a point where they want to achieve at the end of the year. So that winter test, it does show some growth, but also shows the progress that the students are making. And we'll talk a little bit more how we use the NWEA data as we talk about professional development. In reading, eighty-seven percent of the students at Lee met their student growth goal. And then what I have broken down is by grade level, by subject, so kindergarten math and kindergarten reading, so just look at the math and the reading. So this shows that every grade level, students are at or above the eighty percent, so eighty percent or more of students met their growth goal, as we break it down per grade, per subject area. So when you add all those percentages together, that's how we got eighty-eight percent overall for math, and the eighty-seven percent overall for reading.
The NWEA says students have the best chance of proficient on the M-Step if they score a sixty percent on the.
If they're in the sixteenth percentile.
Sixteenth percentile.
Or higher.
They have the best. Doesn't mean they're going to score proficient, but because one day in time, can, you know, a student wakes up, has a bad day, can learn everything from test scores, but, so when you look at these scores, it could be promising that we have that many students in that level of grade. These are the percent that met their target, it's not the percentile scores, but that's, this is a parameter to kind of work towards that M-Step score.
In order for me to look at the professional development for this school year, I broke it down into a couple of key areas. First of all, we have our grade level meetings, so three, four times a year, each grade level meets for about half a day, about three hours, so some things that we are going to focus on. We've already done the first round with all grade levels. We focus on analyzing the NWEA and the M-Step data. Now, when we look at this, we do show the overall scores, we look at the big picture, but more importantly, when teachers have the time to look at their individual classes, the individual students, so what we've looked at is, you know, what areas are some of the strengths for the teaching class, individual students, you know, where are they with their learning? So teachers can use that information to help guide their instruction. As we talked about, they see a larger group of students understanding a certain concept, and they don't have to work too much on that, or they may just work on a small group who doesn't, who didn't get all that information, who don't have that information, as shown on the, excuse me, NWEA. M-Step data, that's a little bit more that, with the data that we have, I can use that with the fourth grade teachers, they can look at last year's third grade students or the current students. So we look at the claims, kind of which are the standards that are tested on the M-Step, so they can see, you know, what areas did the third grade not do so well on, what were some strengths, what were some weaknesses, so they can look at that, have that information. And then the fourth grade teacher's always pretty excited to see how last year's students did, or this year's fifth grade students did, and say, yep, no, I thought that student would do that well, or kind of surprised that didn't do well in a certain area, so that's something they can focus on, and see if they need to look at that for the current students. So they kind of use that NWEA and the M-Step data to see, you know, what areas they need to focus on in the class. There's different works for NWEA, they can do the learning continuum, which kind of shows where students are, what they're ready to learn, so when teachers differentiate students in the classroom, they can use that as a guide, do different groups, when they do guided reading, when they do different areas, teach certain subjects, they can group students as what their levels. Also, we're working on the attention vocabulary that's used in NWEA and M-Step, because teachers are finding they may use certain terminology, but then when it comes to the students doing testing, it might be a different terminology, and students aren't quite aware of exactly what it is, so want to make sure that we're using some same language, the same vocabulary. Try teachers with NWEA vocabulary, they can use daily M-Step vocabulary, so students are learning what those words are. So they may know how to do the problems, they may know how to solve something, we don't want them to get stuck on the words you use, or just not understanding what they're trying to read. And we're always evaluating, updating our curriculum and the pacing, you know, what things need be taught. Teachers who love reflection, like last year, you know, certain grade levels say, you know, with math, you need a little more time in geometry, so want to do that closer when they do the NWEA, when they do the M-Step at the end of the school year. So they're always reflecting and seeing how their pacing is going, if they need to do anything different throughout the course of the year. Always opportunities for them to reflect. Another piece of our professional development, Mondays with our professional learning communities, focus on the balanced literacy focus, something that we refer to, this chart, looking at all the different components, making sure that those are the non-negotiables, those are something that need to be seen in the classes every day and then weekly. Focus on our school improvement plan, reading, math, writing, we have a new writing vault here, so we've already done some writing samples, the teachers have graded those with the rubric, so they can see growth with writing. And a few years ago, all the teachers went through classroom instruction that works, so we're continuously using that, and have that focus on all observations, walkthroughs, and part of our school group night also.
What about those teachers that are new to the building group?
Last year, they had opportunity to get some training over the summer, and that student of staff weren't able to, we can give them resources, supplements, something that when they have time with their teams, that they can discuss those different instructions that work. We have a little literature that they can sell, so if we supplement it, we've never had the ISD, but there's more opportunities for them to go, we look at having them go back there. So just at the end of this past school year, students have, teachers have the opportunity to summer go through, if they weren't going to go through the training.
So if I'm new, I'm getting, that classroom instruction that works is still provided by the ISD, so if I'm a new teacher at Lee, I'm going to that.
Yeah, we're looking at when it's offered.
Right.
There's that formal thing, but there's the ongoing, it's happening.
Yeah, I understand that.
That's how we balance it, if they're not able to go through the formal training at ISD, we supplement that with our seasoned teachers, that can help support them there. And most teachers that we see, when they're, the new teachers, sure, they've had some type of exposure, whether they've been training down the school district, or some experience of some of that in some of their college classes. And then last part of our, key part of our professional development, new this year, we have the ISD, literacy coaching, so we have the ELA coaches, they're coming to Lee Elementary. We've had them come and visit the second grade classes so far. So in the morning, the team, a team of three coaches, they all go into second grade classrooms, made observations, took some time to kind of meet as a team, they create a PowerPoint to share with the secondary team, and then in the afternoon, we had subs for the second grade team, they came in, we just met, talked about observations, what the ISD coaches saw, we just had a conversation about how things have done in the classroom, what are some of the best practices. So second grade was the only one that met with them so far. Next week, we're starting with other grade levels too, so throughout the course here, each grade level is going to have two or three meetings with the ISD and the coach. So going great with the second grade team, just a lot of discussion sometimes, you know, teachers as a teaching, you know, looking at the best practices, but having that conversation with the coaches at the ISD brings some new ideas, some reminders, so it's a very beneficial two-way conversation. The ISD, they do a good job of not coming saying, you're doing this right or wrong, here's what we see, here's our experience, and just have like a professional conversation. Very non-threatening, very beneficial to the teachers. That overview's the student data at the elementary, and what we're looking at, focused on our professional development to continuously increase those numbers, add more and more students proficient, advance on the M-Step, and getting those student growth percentages to continuously to increase.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Any administrator that wants to chime in on this question, I know we have seen at the board table and seen all kinds of things, and even hear about the balanced literacy idea, and I know increasing the level books that are at Lee, and the teachers have this resource, and all those kinds of things. What are the same opportunities for math? Because as I look at things, and as I look at everybody's presentations here, it tends to be math in certain areas that sinks a little lower. So what are the things that are available, what are the things that we're utilizing to get that same idea in place for math skills at all levels?
Well, I will start. The foundation for the state of Michigan's curriculum for math is based on the experiences that kids, students have in the classroom, using the eight mathematical principles. If they're being used with fidelity and daily, that's what kids should be experiencing. Real world, it is not diddles, it is not a worksheet that you're filling out, it's hands-on, it is creating charts and graphs, interpreting, it is seeing if what you get is from an answer is even real, realistic, to understand, it's a ways of approaching math, it's not the, I would say, textbook worksheet, which is why over the last couple of years, we have moved away from, we still purchase some of the worksheets for the low round, because it is very much a hands-on, or they got to cut things out and manipulate it, but it's that, that real-world experience, is about that happening every day in every math class. Most, I don't know this statistic for Richmond, but I know for the state, most teachers do not have a mathematical training or background in the state of Michigan. I don't know those statistics for Richmond, which I can easily find out. So if you have a, that's not your strongest suit, you just got to make sure that you're doing those principles. So that's one of the things, last year when we did, two years ago, we looked at the math pacing, are we even teaching the stuff that kids need to know to demonstrate proficiency on any assignment, whether it's the state, or whether it's NWEA, or just in general classroom, classroom assessment? That would be the start. Second, I would say, is looking at the data that you get from the NWEA. It gives us groups of kids where it shows what their strengths are, and what their areas to improve on, which allows the teacher to not have to necessarily figure that out by themselves, but allows, uses the system to help us guide that instruction. Whether it's language arts or math, it can no longer be all this whole group instruction. There's a time and place for that, but it's really that small, that balanced literacy component, where you have an opportunity of, the shared reading is your whole group instruction, you're teaching a theme, and then you break students down into a guided reading group to focus on their skills that they need, which in essence is a clue we should be with across the board, in terms of reading math. I don't know my best thing.
And at the secondary level also, we use the data that we receive from the PSAT and SAT scores, and then we're moving forward to, you can enter that into Khan Academy, which is a free online resource, and then that will give you a prescriptive individual diagnosis on the student's strengths and weaknesses, and so you're really getting true individualized mathematical instruction, and the teachers are able to go in there and work the students through individually pacing them along what they need, and we also have an implementation, or implemented a SAT math class also in high school.
So just from this perspective, just to consider, do all the teachers have the resources that they need to do what they need to do? I guess is the perspective that I will have, from sitting here at this table and reading this data, and that's kind of our role, is to just double check and make sure that that's in place, so the resources there are enough to do.
I can say, speaking from the middle school, like last year, you, you were my, it was two years ago, in mathematics, team six, I think, of K five, who were using expressions, made that decision six years ago, probably like the Saxon math, and we went to the CPM pile preparatory math, which was built by teachers, and it's kind of an approach, as Mr. Walmsley was saying, there is a textbook, there is a non-line textbook, there's a homework culture, there's a lot of training on it, all our teachers have been trained on it, and this approach, because it's more of just discovering math, rather than sitting and getting it, me telling you how it works, you have to discover how it works. We are, and have any concerns, but we are happy with some of the rigor, or some of the grit that our kids are starting to show with math, with having that mindset, and having a number of facts, true or false, six, seven, eight. And then we also this year had, not a very specific, like math book. So we are pushing in on two classes, and we do have two or four classes, so out of our seven hours, four other hours are specifically aggressive, besides the math. So I could say at the middle school, I'm happy with what has been supported. Quick overview of Richmond Middle School's 17, 18 data, and then 18, 19 plan. And I apologize on some of those, it's going to be a little blurry up here as well, but I just wanted to show what some, some of these sheets we look at, why we focus with our NWEA data a little bit more. So this last year was the fourth year of the M-Step, and I do want to note that it's been different each year, so I'm sure you're right earlier when you talked about that open target. Fourth, or fifth grade had four assessments, which is quite a few, but they're shortened, and they weren't passed science this year. We tested the new grade level standards that were adopted, and different grade levels, so this was the first year of the grade two science. Previous year was a fourth grade. So 17, 18, we took the science with the new standards that were just adopted, and then of course mathematics and ELA. Sixth grade, there's two assessments, mathematics and English, and then the difference with math and English over the years is taking out, there's been a class asked, and a bunch of questions you're supposed to answer based on what we did with that asked, that has been there for the last seven times. Seventh grade, same thing, two tests, and then eighth grade, we're back to four tests, social studies, science, again, is the same as fifth grade, it was the new standards that were just adopted last year, and then a different grade level, because in sixteen, seventeen, seventh grade took the math, or the science test. So that's what we took this year. Our M-Step results in ELA, social studies, science, and math, I have NA for science, we had to take the test, but they didn't give us the results, and they're not going to give us the results, it's like a test I didn't do. Didn't count for us or against us, but we took it. And social studies, and it was again in fifth and eighth, that's been traditional, except where if you look back three or four years, social studies was actually taken in ninth grade, we gave them back anyway. So we did, we did make gains with the county, state average in mathematics, but we're not near where we need to be, or where we should be. And ELA has remained as strong for us, we haven't performed as well as some of the classes that have gone through the middle school, but it's still a strength for us, our land return scores. Now, this year, we are going to have four assessments in fifth grade, and then I put different assessments again up there, we're going to show you what's different, so social studies, this is So social studies, this will be our second year of science and we should get the results, math, English, sixth grade, same two, seven and an A. The difference here is we're not gonna have an M-Step in math and we're not gonna have an M-Step in English. So this year, our eighth grade results is gonna be PSAT math and a PSAT English. They're both brand new tests, which will be a baseline year for us. So third grade, all the way up to seventh grade, we'll be able to have cohort data to see how we grow over time. And from eighth grade now up to eleventh grade, the high schools, we'll be able to have that cohort data. And we'll concentrate a lot on that PSAT and look at trends that we can address curricular wise, looking back and what we're doing in seventh grade.
PSAT has traditional. For year, right?
And in nine.
In nine, right, yes.
Just raising that, I think it's two years now, this might be the third year, that we've done it in nine and ten.
Yep. And last year they.
It's two years, it's the third year.
This is year, this will be year three coming up. And last year they offered a custom pilot in, and then they have a whole inside development because that would have been five classes, two score right there. So we should look at.
Yeah, I just, on the last screen, that we were looking at the, that's the county, the state, how we did. And so that's the percent.
Proficient.
Proficient.
Now this is the one that's, this is the school target analysis report that we get from the state, from the M-Step. And we get this in September. So we just got this for this year and this was last year's. And I just wanted to point this out because we're gonna go a little more detailed with NWA. Because these triangles, and you probably can't quite read it, but the triangle, the blue one on the left is, means that that target is a relative strength. And then the circle means neither a strength nor a weakness. And then the upside down triangle that's yellow means it's a relative weakness. And then the asterisk, it says there's insufficient data to say whether it's a strength or a weakness. So under the, under the claim reading, you have all those targets and underneath those targets, there's sub-targets. So that, that target one, under claim one reading, target one where it says it's a relative weakness, there could be ten sub-targets underneath that. So we feel that this isn't telling us a lot. I mean, we look at it and we look at relative strengths and weaknesses, okay, here's a target reading and these ten fall underneath it. But before they went to the M-Step, we usually get item analysis of each standard. Here's where we're, you know, so.
You're, that doesn't happen anymore? It's this instead.
So then, okay, so that's the data printouts we get other than proficiency and of course looking at our clusters of kids and where they stand. For our pushing classes and our support classes and our additional help. Mr. Koosh went over this, student growth percentile or projection, sixty to a hundred, forty to fifty-nine. Don't have questions. We were at sixty-eight point seven, so we were, for the sixteen, seventeen year, we were in the four category. And our best guest, it's not out yet, but he wants us myself, all of us, and I'm sure he did go to that training. It was quite intense training and it was interesting too to see how they calculated it. Like I said, we did take a little bit of a step back with some of our scores last year on M-Step. But we still feel we're at the low end of four, but the hot end of three, most likely three, which was fifty-six at the beginning, but that won't be out until summer.
Back on the script.
In my four years of being here, I have never presented this to a board. Reason why this is important this year is in the teacher evaluation law. This year, student growth or student achievement data counts for forty percent of the teacher's evaluation, the administrator's evaluation and my evaluation. Of that forty percent, fifty percent of it has to be based on state assessments. So what the state of Michigan has chosen to do is use this as that measure. So we will be able to actually pull that student growth percentile for every teacher's class. So I'll just use an example. Let's assume Mrs. Ranger is a fourth grade teacher. She may have a student growth percentile of three and Mr. Bartels is the other fourth grade teacher on the Guam Law Department. He may have a two, because that's the way the state is tracking the data down to the teacher. What we have done as a district, because this is so complicated, the formula the state is using to come up with this and the process to get it to the teacher level. Is we've identified as a building, what's your student growth percentile and everybody in that building owns that score, regardless of your grades over.
You mean what do we want it to be? Same as we're saying, where do we want to get, and we've agreed that.
As a building, that fifty percent of the forty percent of the evaluation is based on this. The ironic thing, and I'm gonna show you what it's all about, is every year the cut score changes. Mr. Bartels has said the test for M-Step has changed four times. You had a stagnant test the first year. You had a computer-based test where they just answered the questions on the computer the second year. The third year, they had a computer adapted, which is based on how you answered. And then the fourth year, they decided to remove pieces of the test because it was too long. So we have not had a consistent measurement, any district in the state, for four years since we've gone to M-Step. And now we're at a point where this data is now has to be tied to evaluation. So when I get to my report and we have the opportunity to vote for legislators and state board representatives who get it, that's my plea for this period is to know who you're voting for. There has been legislation introduced to reduce that back to twenty-five percent. The odds of it happening are slim depending on the election. But I just wanted to point out that the only reason why this now becomes a talking point for us is because the state's now implementing this year. And it's only for middle school, elementary school. And then part of, and I wanted to show you that one, that one target analysis report is there is enough data, there isn't, and it's not very specific and it's not very drilled down. This chart here isn't necessarily drilled down, but it gives us an overview of what we're looking at NWA growth data wise. And we spent a lot of time on NWA for the exact reason that Mr. Wong said, is it's the same test. I mean, it's not the same questions, but it's the same format and same process. And we're going on year six, year six of this test. So it hasn't changed, so we believe this is a pretty good indicator of how we're doing. Now our challenge is, and we will continue to work on it, now our challenge at the middle school is to bridge the gap between this data and the M-Step data and this data and the PSAT data. Because we have to bridge two gaps now in those four. But our goal is obviously where we come in with the RIT score and that's where the norm is where the average person would score. And our goal, we want to be higher than the national norm. And these are 2015 norms. So it's been relatively consistent. And then from fall to winter, we want to reduce that gap if there is a gap or if we're on the positive end of that gap, we want to continue to outperform that national norm. So some of these negatives on the national norm and the left-hand columns here, third column, becoming positives over here on the far right column. Means that we're moving and growing more than the national average. So we're excited about that. There are some areas where we stagnate and we look into why. Now one sheet, oh, here's, this is just a real quick overview of our growth. And that's another part that we use in the district for our teacher evaluations is the percent that met growth, that met or growth target within the margin of error. Reading building wide, five, six, seven, eight, eighty-one percent. And I would use seventy-five, mathematics seventy-nine point two, overall building result seventy point five. Now, we believe that we're able to do this and would be able to be successful in the NWA because of the reports that they give and what we're able to break down. This class report, and I know it's blurry, but it puts the percentages into the areas that is being tested. So we can look right off the bat, okay, in mathematics, what area are we loading? And then it puts the kids and lists them, we can list them from the worst score to the best, the best score to the worst, how would we want to quantify that data or sort that data? But what gets exciting for us is in this chart, the next one to that analysis, the class breakdown by RIT, it groups them in boxes and tables. And so you can see, if you can see where I'm circling right here, all these kids right here are in that same RIT for that same subcategory of the content. You click on those, on that kid or that group of kids, it gives us the next screen. And it tells you what, on the left-hand column on the bottom here, this is the learning continuum. For that certain area on the left-hand column, these are the skills that we need to keep refreshing. This is what they need to learn right now and this is where we need to push them to. So this is very powerful for a teacher to have in the classroom for when they're grouping, when they're making decisions, who needs one-on-one help, you know, how do I wanna group this week? How do I wanna group based on, okay, I don't wanna, these kids are all the way ahead, these kids are behind, let me work with these kids. It really allows us to differentiate. And each one of our teachers have their own passwords, they're on this quite a bit and breaking down this data and then they fill out sheets and we sit down and we go over it and we plan how we're gonna go through. Now, new teachers, is that what you're asking? Have been shown, they have their IDs and everything, shown everything by teachers, but we haven't sat down and had to really push forward with it. But we will.
Just to clarify, Mr. Bartels.
Yes, that's no problem.
Would I know RIT?
Well, that's the, the RIT score is just the score and.
Is it an acronym for something?
Yeah, it's.
I don't mean to put you on the spot, I'm sorry, but I like.
I always know RIT in, well, the problem with RIT is, I shouldn't say problem, but by the time they get to the high school, so let's say we have two forty-one. Two forty-one in the eighth grade math is fantastic, but the level of growth over the next three years for that kid, the ceiling is, so you're not gonna necessarily show that for the growth. So if you have a two forty-one, the two-point growth might be excellent, but as a sixth grader, as an eighth grader or ninth grader, two point one might be excellent, but as a sixth grader, it's not. Because a sixth grader should grow exponentially.
Is that more growth?
Yeah. Think of it this way, the RIT is NWA's name for how they're looking at kids nationally and creating that growth basis.
What's the cut score?
It's their, it's cut scores for the NWA assessment. In kindergarten and first, the expected growth is a lot larger than when you get up to ninth and tenth grade where it's very minimal. And so what we use if we're looking at from an organizational perspective, we want, we're targeted eighty percent of our kids meet their growth target. So as Mr. Bartels said, if I have a sixth grader, but he's really functioning or she's functioning at a fourth grade level, it's measuring where they came in and getting them to grow as far as they can go to where the point they came in, not from a sixth grade standard. So think of the RIT as their cut scores for the NWA where M-Step, the state determines their cut scores. The value with the NWA is it's, we're looking at sixth graders, their peer groups across the nation, these are how our kids are performing against other kids.
And I'm drawing a blank on what it stands for.
Was it, was it RIT?
Well, you know, what do we do without. But this is actually a really good analogy. It says the RIT scale is a stable scale, they feed in issues. It accurately measures student performance, for example, age, grade or grade level. It's like marking height on a rose jump, being able to see on tall or child, it's like there are these points. So it's that whole individual's child's state score.
Got it, okay.
And so what we try to do is as teachers work with the kids, help them understand where they're at, to give them a target of where they wanna, what's their goal that they wanna get to. Because every child is different.
And we just finished that test, not the last week, but the week before. And the next two weeks, we sit down with kids and really focus and goal, goal point the teachers do with one-on-one.
You guys knew about this last year, I think this speaks well for Richmond Community Schools. And this is pretty much our whole, you know, K eight, or that's not K, but it is K because that's where we started. But our whole K eight career with learning that from the time they started till the end, whatever the national, it's hard to read, but that. We were in a ninety-eight percentile of student growth. And that's, that's pretty good. If you're in a ninety percentile of anything, it's pretty remarkable. So I think that was screwed through to the K eight program, getting kids moving along and growing. Because that was last year. Goal one, this is always our number one goal, it's always been my number one goal in our staff. It's the number one goal is positive relationships with students and parents, increase student achievement. Everything we do to try to get kids to wanna be at school, stay at school, be part of something. Content obviously matters, but if the content is not important, you don't, you don't, you don't, you don't try to get to more. So number one relationship is what we try to build on. This year, and pretty much all last year, but this year making sure we're reporting it right and we're continuing it right, especially with our new staff. Our focus is gonna be continue to focus on standard-based grading, which is prioritizing and understanding what we teach. Evidence, Rubik's, research is very clear, if you tell a kid what target is, they're more likely to reach that target. Outcome-based assessments, you know, we don't want everything to always be filling in, you know, filling in bubbles. Being able to use the information, be able to proof you know the information through projects and one-on-one interviews and explanations. And lesson plan sequencing, instructional strategies and a Bloom's Taxonomy, we need to get to, get from the remembering and understanding, the baseline of learning all the way up to that evaluating and creating with our content. And that's our goal. Instructional strategies, Mr. Koosh talked about it, classroom instruction network. We had three new teams, three new teachers last year, but four, the year before that hadn't had classroom instruction networks. Did take it this summer through the ISD, through our training money. And anybody that's new this year that doesn't have it, it would be part of the family after moving forward. Whether it be our department meetings, our PD meetings or our staff meetings, we're constantly reviewing instructional strategies and put a focus on that. So they are getting it even if they weren't formally trained. And a lot of teachers have been trained in something similar, so it's just a transition of terminology. But you know, like one of the fundamental, or this learning target, going over that learning target at the beginning of class goes along with evidence Rubik's. Here's what we're gonna go today and here what we're working on today, referring it at the end. A lot of teachers drew that through their teacher training, but haven't been formally trained in classroom instruction network. So we're pleased, we're, we're also pleased that our teachers have power to have, come over with experience, so we're not broken. Another goal this year is the PSAT mindset, building mindset. And then I put though the eighth grade PSAT. And then I put though, the eighth grade PSA doesn't test the eighth grade standards. So this year, from now until the end of the year, we are challenging, have a challenge, and that challenge is to really study the mindset of what is a PSAT test. A lot of a PAC test is rigor, it's you to read a longer article and answer questions, to work through problems that aren't just one or two steps, it may be a three or four or five steps. So, the PAC format mindset is really what gets a lot of kids, and we're going to work on this year with best of parent kids for that test. I believe that's it. Oh, no, the last one was PDS. This goes with goal number one, positive relationships, rewarding, positive behavior, encouraging positive behavior. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so we saved the most complicated for last. In the high school, we gave a lot of tests, a lot of standardized tests. The first test we're going to focus on is an NWA. The NWA, the goal there is to increase the knowledge base in all core content areas is measured by the test. We give that in the fall, winter, and spring for our ninth and tenth graders. We give the PSAT for our ninth and tenth graders, we give the SAT for our eleventh graders, and we give the M-Step for our eleventh graders. So we have four big tests that we give throughout the school year in the high school. First one we're going to look at is our PSAT nine, I realize that's a little bit small there, but these are going to be this year's tenth graders that we're looking at for their scores. The total score of eight eighty for this year's tenth graders, again, last year's ninth graders, is four points above the Michigan average there. And the EBRW, which is evidence-based reading and writing, was six percent, six points above the state average, and three points actually higher than the national average, so we're very happy with that score out of this year's sophomore class. Our math score, we're two points below the state average, so we're close to the state average, and we're going to get better on our math for this year's sophomores. As far as the benchmarks themselves, the PSAT is broken into two different benchmarks, there's the EBRW, and then there is the math. Seventy-two percent of our students reached the benchmark in EBRW. Seven percent of our students were approaching, which means they're anywhere from two to five questions away from reaching that proficiency. And then we have twenty-one percent that fall into the need to strengthen skills category, which means they are quite a bit, quite a bit away from being proficient. Forty-three percent of our students reached that math benchmark, again, with thirteen percent approaching, and forty-five needing to strengthen skills. So, one of the things that we determined as a high school staff early on, that we're really going to try to focus on, on getting those thirteen percent and seven percent that are, again, that, that two to five questions away, they're right there. Those are students who may have come in, had a bad day, or made a mistake, you know, they had to fill in C, they filled in B. So that's where we think we can make an immediate impact, is with some test strategies, test-taking skills, and just getting them over the hump while we continue to focus on getting those twenty-one and forty-five percent to strengthen their skills. For our PSAT ten, and again, this is this year's junior class that will be taking the SAT. Total score of nine thirty-six was seventeen points above the Michigan average, so we're very happy with that. And six points above, uh, I'm sorry, seventeen points above the Michigan average, and six points above the national average. Our EBRW was eight points above the state average, and four points higher than the national. So the trend in the high school is that our EBRW scores continue to be above the state and national averages. Our math point, our, the math was nine points above the state average, and two points above the national average. So this is where we're starting to see a little bit of a change in the trend of our students. This year's junior class scores very well in EBRW, as well as mathematics. And I think that due to some of the changes that have been put into place in the high school, in the curriculum, and then the teaching strategies that have been put into place the last several years.
Just a second, one question. Back that screen before, when you were talking about those, those groups of students that we want to get, or not the approaching, the-
Need to strengthen skills?
Need to strengthen skills. When you were talking about, you're working with the approaching kids in that, is that where you were talking about the SAT class, or because this is PSAT that they're taking, is that the same, what are we doing to get them to that, to help them along?
So, those are students right there that have been either selected for the, we have an SAT pull-out program right now, Mr. Obolbe in the high school has identified those students with high sophomore went through. And this is where you have to kind of dig in deep to the data. We went through and identified each kid based on their scores, their strengths and weaknesses, the type of questions that they either got right or wrong, and then selected them for individualized pull-out sessions with Mr. Obolbe, or they were placed into an SAT prep course for math. And those are the students that are really going to benefit from the prescriptive cod academy, or if you can do math.
We have invested, not only that pull-out, we have invested thirty-one, eight dollars to work with some intervention classes, which the staff at the high school have identified and signed kids up, so they may have two math classes together. And this is the name of one of them, that teaches the math interventions.
Sure. Moving on with our PSAT ten benchmarks, sixty-six percent of our students reached that EBRW, four percent approaching, and then thirty again needing to strengthen their skills. With the mathematics, it was forty percent reached the benchmark, with ten approaching, and fifty that needed to strengthen the skills. So, these are the students right now, if you're going to look at it, the, we would hope that the ten percent, and, not that we hope, the ten percent there for the mathematics that are approaching, those are the students that are in the SAT prep math course. The four percent that are approaching, as well as certain of the thirty percent, and some of the sixty-six percent also were targeted for that pull-out intervention by Mr. Obolbe. So, you know, we're trying to really individualize this based on the student's needs. For the SAT, which is, again, this year's senior class, total score of ninety-two point two, was seven point, seven point two points below the McComb County average, and nearly eighteen points below the state average. Twenty-five point nine of the Richmond High School students met both of our benchmarks here. So, while the SAT scores from last year were certainly not where we would like them to be, the approach we're taking is our, this year's junior class, as well as this year's sophomore class, have all sorts of positive indicators across the board. We expect them to do well on this year's spring test. We've put a lot of effort into interventions for the sophomores and juniors, as well as trying to identify the strengths and weaknesses of these freshmen right off the bat, to see what we can do to help them. And again, this is the mathematics data, average score of forty-five, was six point three below the county, and nine point eight below the state average. And we had just over one quarter of our Richmond High School students reached that math benchmark score. For the EBRW, it's obviously better here, the four ninety-seven point two, just barely one point below the McComb County average, and then eight points below the state average, with nearly two-thirds of our students, that should say EBRW, on this on the right side, called that, for that, for that benchmark. We've kind of taught you about NWA, and my graphic representation here is going to be a little bit different for you. The little diamond there in the middle, if you can see on your sheets, that's what NWA has as their expected growth. So, instead of using the numerical data, I use a graphical representation here. So, you can see on the right side that for ninth and tenth grade, the ninth graders exceeded the growth, the tenth graders met the growth. On the right side, we have for language usage, the ninth grade was significantly behind the expected growth. So, what we have to do now is go through and figure out why. So, we're going to go through and individualize those student reports, see if some of those students may have had a bad day, whether the test had changed from the previous year. It's our task now to go to find out what was the cause of that, because they do not reach that expected score. Because again, you look at the tenth graders, and they outperformed the expectation. So to us, that, that ninth grade score is a anomaly that we need to do some further research on. And again, just kind of summarizing, the math exceeded the expected growth, which for us is a positive sign, because we were looking at all the indicators over the last couple of years, math has been kind of the area that we needed to really improve, and where we saw the improvement was in math this year in the NWA, I'm sorry, last year in the NWA. The language usage did not grow, and that's concerning to us, so we're going to take a look at that. They just barely met or exceeded, so again, hopefully the interventions that we're using, and Mr. Obolbe pull those students out, work on that issue. Now on to our M-Step, and again, the data here is just for the social studies test. I think Mr. Bartel's mentioned earlier that they, they gave the science test, but it was a baseline test, so they didn't evaluate this on that. Fifty-two point two percent of our juniors last year scored proficient on the M-Step, and eleven point three were advanced proficiency, so those are our very top end kids. So we're looking at about two-thirds of our kids either being proficient or advanced proficiency for social studies. Our areas of focus for the year, our professional development for this year is really focused on the analyzation of the prior year standardized testing. What we're doing in our PEDs, both our department PEDs and our whole group PEDs, is we are really surgeon precision taking apart these tests. Where we've gone through the PSAT nine, ten, and are currently going through the SAT, question by question, looking for common themes, looking for common trends, what are we missing? Obviously, the questions change from year to year, but the topic and the content, the standard on which the question is based don't change from year to year. So our staff right now is currently digging through these, literally question by question, saying, okay, well, sixty-three percent of our students missed this Heart of Algebra question, now we have to go back and we have to look at our Heart of Algebra instruction, where do we change our instruction to make sure that we hit these gaps? So it's all going through questions, you know, tests that are hundreds of questions long, and finding out where our gaps are in that, so that we don't, you know, shortchange our students, and we make sure that they're getting the instruction that they need and they deserve. The biggest focus on preparing our students for the spring testing, we have fifty-seven students taking the PSAT NMSQT, that alphabet soup, which is going on Wednesday. That is a totally up-to-them test, they didn't have to take that. That is for our students that want to be exposed to the language, the style of questions, the rigor that these tests provide, as well as possibly qualify for a national merit test. So, we have several students that, based on the prior year's scores, are going to be right there. So we, that, that test, the NMSQT, is the top one percent in the nation. So you are the elite of the elite, and we're pretty excited that we have a couple of students that they have a shot at making it this year. Development of the math-focused instruction during traditional school hours, the math department has agreed and to work with me on our half-days moving forward, after these next two half-days, those half-days are going to be strictly dedicated to math instruction in the high school. So, all of our teachers, this was a little bit of a shock, but they're on board now, everybody's going to be teaching math on those days. So, it's going to be teaching those real-world applications, and teaching the students those gaps that we've identified that they had, as well as we're going to be using some of our higher-level seniors that are going to be in those classes, helping to teach some of our lower, or, maybe tenth grade, eleventh grade students, because students sometimes learn best from other students. So we're excited to have some more seniors working in there with them. We have the SAT prep course for math, which we've mentioned before, as well as an individualized small group instruction for EBRW. Our school improvement team focus is again, kind of like middle school, the implementation of capturing kids' hearts, and making sure that our kids feel comfortable every day when they come into school, greeting them with a smiling face, a handshake, you know, because if we don't meet those basic needs for them, it doesn't matter how well we teach if those students don't feel like they have a connection with our staff and the fellow students, we're not going to get a hundred percent out of those students. So when that relationship of trust is cultivated, obviously the students are willing to take a chance. We want them to take a chance to be wrong. There's nothing wrong with being wrong. Take that chance, stand to yourself, that's kind of what we've been hitting with our students this year. Obviously, again, to decrease the classroom disruptions, increase our attendance rate, and create collaboration between our students, a lot of cross-curricular, cross-curricular collaboration, it's a lot of Cs, all right in row, as well as having our staff members kicking outside the box and willing to take chances in the classroom. And kind of the unofficial motto this year is every second counts, so these kids hear me yelling at in the hallway, the seconds add up to minutes, the minutes add up to hours, and we need everyone.
Thank you.
I just wanted to leave the board with it, is I, I speak up half the administrative team and the teachers. We are constantly trying to figure out how we can do better. That's, that I don't think is any question. But I think the listening audience needs to recognize that every year, cut scores change. And so what we thought was proficiency one year, may not be proficiency the next year. And so it's that constant reevaluation and looking. Last thing is what's most on my mind, I know a lot of teachers that got to sit through the second grade PD a couple of weeks ago, a week ago, two weeks ago. This current second grade group is the group that falls under the third grade reading block. You look at the state assessments for the last three years in reading, I'm looking at state averages, forty-five, forty-eight, and forty-five, one percent proficiency with state average. They're telling us that their recommendation as a state is that fifty-five percent of them, fifty-five percent of them roughly, are being, going to be retained in third grade, excluding. So, again, I can't compress it enough, Amanda Price, who is the author of this bill, founded it under Florida's third grade reading, Florida has since repealed their third grade reading law, because it doesn't work. But our legislators have not realized that.
Ryan, just a quick question, that, reading, you have read third grade reading retention, is it, if I remember correctly, is it retention, complete retention or only retention, does that make sense?
There's a couple. You could be past parts of math, you could be good in fourth grade math, third grade reading, you could be full of third grade, so there's very, very countable. So picture this, we give the assessment in May, state doesn't give these results till August, so right before school starts, I would go and find parents, think they're going to be retained.
But the people that can go against that would be the superintendent and parent, right? Don't you guys make the deciding?
The parent, when August doesn't happen, it's the superintendent that signs off.
So you, but you would take it from-
The person least connected to the student.
Yes, completely. But you would take it from-
Is signing on.
From, you had, you decided how you're going to handle it?
We're waiting to see if the law changes, but yes, we are thinking about how we're going to handle it. Because I may have to come back to you if this law doesn't change, say we need to increase the marketing, like, if it drives the third grade, so.
Right.
It's ludicrous, it's ludicrous, it's not just Richmond, it is every school in the state of Michigan. That's it. Thank you, then, my name is-
Thank you very much. Okay, moving on, public comments portion of our meeting, that if someone would like to address the board, they may do so. You can come up to the podium, there should be a card, you can leave your name and number if you have a question, while it is not a question and answer period, but if you do have a question that needs answering, someone will get back with you. You have three sec, second, three seconds. Oh, if only that were true. You have three minutes to speak. Is there anyone who would like to address the board? Okay, moving on, Board of Education's student rep report, Lexi.
Well, I'll start off with the Lee School. Their fire prevention assembly will be held this Wednesday. The book fair is this week, and that will be held during school and during conferences. The Spanish club has had their, is going to have their first meeting this week. And the homecoming parade is going to be Friday, and all grades will participate in this. And Wednesday, October seventeenth, an assembly will be held, and Jonathan Rand is going to come, and he's the- and he is the author of The Michigan and American Chillers. And he is going to be autographing books that the kids will bring out.
That's it, lead?
Yes. Moving on to the middle school. This Friday, the middle school will be having a pep assembly to celebrate homecoming. The fall N W V A testing has wrapped up and is now done. The PTA will be hosting the Boo Bash this year at RM, R H, sorry, at RMS at the end of this month. Parent-teacher conferences are this week, Wednesday and Thursday, and these will be held from noon to 3:00 p.m. and 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. Tomorrow, Mrs. May and Mr. Bergmeyer will be attending the MISD career cruising. Wednesday, Mrs. May and Mr. Bartels will be attending the MISD PSAT data training. And the PBIS committee was able to meet last week. And lastly, for the middle school, Friday after the pep assembly, the RMS will be doing a school-wide STEAM project. Moving to the high school. The PSAT is going to be this Wednesday and we have nearly 60 students signed up to take the test. The band performed at BUAC Invitational last week and will perform again tomorrow at the MSBOA at Lance Cruz North. Conferences are this week, Wednesday and Thursday, from noon to 3:00 and from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. And this week is homecoming week. And the homecoming football game is this Friday at 7:00, while the homecoming dance is Saturday at 7:00. The last day to buy tickets for the dance is tomorrow and each ticket is going to be $15. The powder puff games were held tonight and they started at 5:30. And lastly, the Spirit Week themes this week for middle and high school. The overall theme is road trip. Monday, each grade wears their assigned color for powder puff. Tuesday is African safari. Wednesday is a ski trip. Thursday is Hawaiian vacation. And then Friday is blue and white day as usual.
And what time is the parade on Friday? Is it 5:00?
I believe yes, yes.
Yes.
Three o'clock.
It's going its normal route.
I believe it starts at the fire station.
Yeah, at PB Street Park. And it comes up.
Oh, that she, sorry. It comes, they start at the park and come up.
They line up at the park and then they walk up and draw like in what that street is when you walk up and then they turn left on the main street.
It's like Washington or Ferguson.
But they line up at the park. Right by the president's tree.
The president's tree.
And then I just, I don't know if, Lexi, if you know, but the middle school, the STEAM, what was that, what's the STEAM project?
I do know that STEAM stands for Science, Technology, Engineering, Arts, and Mathematics.
Right.
So I really don't know what project they're doing, Mr. Bartels.
The math teachers meet every Thursday after school. And they were coming up, and this kind of helps answer Tracy's question earlier too, like where our school's doing for their scores. Well, they're going to start coming up with these STEAM projects during our advisory every Tuesday where you do all the prep work on one Tuesday and the next Tuesday actually pull the project together and it teaches, you know, collaboration teamwork. You only have so many supplies, depending on what the project is, you only have so many supplies to get it done. It's kind of like a competition. So the math teachers said, well, why don't, after the pep rally, because our pep assembly is until 9:00 on Friday. When we come back, that gives us a good two hours, you know, one hour to do all the prep work and one hour to actually pull off the activity. And there's a, they gave me the packet, there's a STEAM project packet and it's like 100 pages, it just has tons of experiments that kids could do that. It's a lot of fun and there's a lot of learning going on. And we're going to try our first one this Friday.
Excellent. Very good. Anybody else have any questions for Lexi? Thank you, my dear.
Thank you. Have fun homecoming. Thank you.
Yes, have fun.
Thank you.
Do you have all your stuff ready for every day that you're wearing?
I do, yeah.
I knew that answer was going to be yes.
Yeah.
Okay, moving on, Superintendent Legislative Update.
Just a couple of things around the school. As Lexi said, conferences are this Wednesday and Thursday. Encourage all parents to meet with their child, see how they're doing and what they can do to partnership to continue to improve the system sort of. I want to thank Pyro Joes. This Friday after our fireworks, or football game, they will again put on a fireworks show for the community. They will be on the last visiting side to come on the home side, so they're on safety. For legislative forum, the House Bill 5707 and House Bill 6401 passed the House Education Committee unanimously, which would reduce the teacher evaluation from 40% down to 20%. The hiccup now goes to the Senate where the Chair of the Senate House Committee is Senator Padlo, who initially wanted the bill higher than 40%. So it's got to pass through his committee before any changes, oh, the changes to the teacher evaluation law. And I just want to reiterate on that one, that student data that you just saw tonight is for this year's evaluations in May. So it's using two, three, four-years-old data, a teacher evaluation and administrator evaluation for something that's not even occurring here. So I'd like to know any other industry that does that. Use four-year-old data or three-year-old data and evaluate your performance rather than current data. With that, I had the opportunity to attend a State Board of Education forum on the 25th. I sent out to the staff an email. Listening to the four candidates that are running for the State Board of Education, these are the ones that are going to choose the next state superintendent as well as influence policy-making decisions as well as the implementation of policy. Please read on these candidates, know who you're voting for. There are some that are, that are very much understand what public school is and that it's a foundation of our democracy and that all students have an opportunity to free and appropriate public education. And some don't believe that. Some are very vocal that schools have enough money to educate the students. And I just want to reiterate, $470 per cut we got in 2011-ish, '9, '10, again, we're the year now. We're just now just a little above that. Some districts are just now at that point. So please educate yourself on the candidates. Want to give a shout out to the peer-to-peer middle school group. I just received this today, I'll pass it around. This is their scarecrow contest, they entered this year, so I'll pass it around. Thanks for the staff and everything, Mrs. Holman, who sent that to you. And I'm sure there's multiple staffs that have heard students put that together. So there's a couple of those out on town, so take a minute to look at it and see that Richmond is represented in our council.
Next, items of interest from members of the board. Does anybody have anything?
Do you remember a couple of meetings ago, I think it was in the spring, the Girl Scout troop came in here and presented about their community service project, about hand sanitizer and cleaning. I have been working through the summer and the last couple of weeks and we will begin installing classrooms throughout these devices. This is a model, I love this. No charge from the district. They will figure out, we have supplies, but when you put your hand under it, it actually gives you a little screen picture about what to do. So I'll be working with the principals and the staff again locating where we're going to place them. They are willing to offer us about 150 of these units, which we basically could put one outside of every classroom door if we wanted to. They'll help cut down through the flu bug and other germs that are present here at school. So I just want to give a shout out to the Girl Scouts. We took what their proposal was, we're trying to work on some of their ideas and suggestions. Obviously, hand sanitizing is the start of any, stopping the spread of any of the germs. Not coughing on people and covering your mouth is also working, but. Oh, sorry.
The right side.
Anyway, so that's, that's what we'll be working on. Kudos to those girls who brought their projects, people already went through the process.
Where are you putting that?
I'm in a.
Board members, anybody with anything? No? Okay. Then we are going to move on to looking for a motion for our first closed session.
Pursuant to Section 8 H of Michigan Homekeeping Act, we've been moved out of the Board of Education. Going to closed session, considering material exception discussion or exposure by state or federal.
Support. Kyle said it first. It's been moved and supported, any discussion? Hearing not all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. We have two closed sessions. By law, when we finish with the one, we have to come out, be an open session and then go back into closed session. But we will not be doing any decision-making or anything like that based on those closed sessions. Okay?